Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
Just waiting for Chief slowly.
I'm here, Chair.
Just one second, please. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the special meeting of the Ottawa Police Services Board to order for February 5th, 2022. I'd like to recognize that Ottawa is located on the unceded territory of the Algonquin-Anasnavi Host Nation. The peoples of the Algonquin-Anasnavi Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors the peoples and the land of the Algonquin-Anasnavi Nation. Today, Ottawa is home to approximately forty thousand First Nations-Inuit and Métis people. Ottawa's indigenous community is diverse, representing many nations, languages, and customs. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors all First Nations-Inuit and Métis people and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. We are currently broadcasting on Zoom and live streaming on YouTube. Given this meeting is being held electronically, I want to caution that there is a possibility of technical difficulties. Should we receive any disruptions, I would ask that everyone remain patient as we work to fix the issue and resume the meeting as soon as possible. I will now proceed with the confirmation of the agenda. That the Ottawa Police Services Board confirmed the agenda of the 5th of February 2022. Is the meeting agenda confirmed?
Confirmed.
Confirmed.
There are two items on the agenda today. The first one is the ongoing demonstrations and the provision of adequate and effective policing. And we're going to start there. So, good afternoon, everyone. Bonjour à tous. Thank you for joining us on short notice. I acknowledge that this is an active situation, and I do not want to take more time than we need for this meeting today. We are on day eight of this occupation. Our city is under siege. This group is emboldened by the lack of enforcement by every level of government. They are terrorizing our residents, torturing them with incessant honking, threatening them, and preventing them from leading their lives. People cannot go to work or open their businesses. They cannot sleep, walk, shop, go to medical appointments, or enjoy their neighborhood. This group is a threat to our democracy. What we're seeing is bigger than just a city of Ottawa problem. This is a nationwide insurrection. This is madness. We need a concrete plan to put an end to this now. To date, we have taken all of the actions requested of us. Chief, I have called this meeting to ask one specific question in accordance with the Police Services Board mandate, which is to provide adequate and effective policing to the citizens of Ottawa. And a reminder to all, the definition of adequate and effective policing means all of the following functions provided in accordance with the standards set out in the regulations, including the standards with respect to the avoidance of conflicts of interest and with the requirement of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms and the Human Rights Code. One, crime prevention. Two, law enforcement. Three, maintaining the public peace. Four, emergency response. Five, assistance to victims of crime. And six, any other prescribed policing functions. Let me be clear. I understand that the board is not allowed, under provincial law, to direct police operations, nor do we seek to do so. But we must ensure that you have the resources you need to do your job. So, Chief, in your opinion, as the chief of police in the city of Ottawa, do you believe that you are still able to provide, given the fluid situation of this occupation, adequate and effective policing to the residents of our city? And if not, what are the legal authorities you require? What resources do you require from the board, and what assistance can we provide at this time? Can go ahead, Chief.
Chair, thank you. I was just thinking you sent your notes over to me, and I was listening to you speak, and I was trying to read through your notes. And you said a lot of very powerful things and with a lot of passion, as I would expect from a leader of your quality and your commitment to the city. I reflect on that and I share that. But I am reflecting on what you said, and I'm looking at some of the words here, and you know, what stands out to me, and I will provide my response. But I'm reflecting on your impassioned statement, "The city is under siege." This is a threat to our democracy. It is a nationwide insurrection. This is madness. And then you've sought a concrete plan, and I will lay out what we, what situation is it today and what our plan is. And I will reflect on the definition of adequate and effective policing. But before I do that, let me just, in the briefest response, extemporaneous, as again, you've called this meeting within the last hour. We've come here as quickly as we can. We weren't prepared for what you were going to ask or the nuances of it. But so please just take this as an extemporaneous attempt to respond to the genuine, authentic efforts of the board here. If the comments that I've reflected on, as I look at the definition of adequate and effective policing, there is literally nothing in that definition of adequate and effective policing that could resolve a city under siege that is in a democracy threatened by a nationwide insurrection driven by madness. I think you've just, in your own wonderful words, described what my police service and I have been trying to manage on behalf of this city for eight solid days. A police service under the Police Service Act was never created. The legislation supporting the Police Service Act was never contemplated. The oath of office that I and my officers swore were never intended to deal with a city under siege, a threat to our democracy, a nationwide insurrection driven by madness. There is no concrete plan for such a scenario as you've described. I will, though, to honor the board's responsibilities and duties to provide governance and oversight to the police service and to help us to achieve a level of adequacy and effectiveness. I will provide the best update I can on the plan that we have. I have, I will ask, just in advance, I'd ask Acting Deputy Chief Trish Ferguson, Deputy Chief Steve Bell, to consider the request for a of resourcing request. This would be normally something we'd want to take away as an inquiry and come back at a future date with a fulsome answer. But I think that the board needs, the city deserves, and we are inclined to give our best answer in the moment. But please know we are working in the moment based on what you just asked. So with that caveat, let me, let me begin. Again, I want to thank you, Chair, for calling the meeting. Thank the board. The full board is here. I have my full command staff here. Actually, Blair Dunkries here as well. Thank you. Thank you for having me and the command team here to speak with you. I welcome the opportunity to speak with you about the ongoing demonstrations described in different ways chaired by you, but ongoing demonstrations. As I will always, we will always remain accountable to the Ottawa Police Services Board or Oversight Body. As I'm sure you can imagine, as you've just articulated on behalf of your board colleagues, this is a very difficult time. It's an unprecedented time. Since this morning, we've had an influx of demonstrations, as we reported to the board earlier on this week and to the council. When last, we had updated our numbers, and I'll see if Trish Ferguson has more updated numbers. But around 1:30 this afternoon, we had around a thousand plus vehicles, a mixture of trucks and other conveyances, demonstrators on Parliament Hill and in the immediate downtown core, roughly five thousand, probably more in numbers, but that's the rough estimate, as well as counter demonstrators, around three hundred plus, somewhere between Elgin Street here and City Hall. Every available Ottawa Police Service member is currently in active duty. We have no members on days off. They're either off on some sort of short, medium, or long-term accommodated leave. Otherwise, they are all called back into duty and in operational mode in one form or the other, the majority of which are in the downtown demonstration area, the surge and contain area, or they're doing police services for the rest of the million residents in the city. I laid out, and my command team and I laid out the framework of, of the latest acceleration of our efforts to address the major risks associated to the ongoing demonstrations at a media conference yesterday and in various discussions with officials over the previous twenty-four hours and the subsequent twenty-four hours. I'll remind the board, I know you're well briefed on it, but I'll remind the board and the public watching of what those three latest developments were. First of all, deploying a surge of police officers in the downtown neighborhoods, approximately a hundred and fifty additional uniformed officers dedicated only to patrolling and addressing unlawful and threatening conduct in the most impacted neighborhoods, specifically Center Town, Lower Town, and Byward Market. I can tell you that that deployment started immediately upon the announcement. The day shift had roughly twenty-five officers. The evening and night shifts, we were able to get up to the range where we thought we would be between fifty and seventy officers this morning. As of ten o'clock, we had deployed seventy officers. And I believe the latest number that I heard was we have an overlap period right now, and we're up around a hundred and fifty officers. Over the course of a twenty-four-hour day in three neighborhoods, that equates to the hundred and fifty we announced equates to roughly twenty to twenty-five officers per neighborhood at any given time in the day. There are overlap periods where those numbers will go higher, and there are transition periods where those numbers will go lower. So it's not a static number throughout the entire day, but it is a major commitment of dedicated resources that were put in place yesterday, have been in place today, and will remain in place through till Monday when we reassess what comes out after the weekend and make adjustments accordingly. The second part of the three pong strategy that was announced yesterday as an enhancement was the expansion of the hardening of the perimeter of the demonstration red zone. That was in anticipation of the demonstrators that were coming in this weekend. That was the Ottawa Police Service in the city of Ottawa utilizing concrete and heavy equipment barricades to create no access roadways throughout the downtown core. Again, extra efforts to get direct protester vehicles ingressing into parking zones outside of the downtown core and parking of illegal parking by demonstrators resulting in bylaw enforcement removal and impound. This included the closing as necessary of interprovincial bridges, highway off-ramps, and roads, all of which was put in place. Significantly more downtown roads were blocked. Significantly more ramps were blocked, significantly earlier blocking of bridges, still allowing emergency services, healthcare, and other city workers to access and egress across those five bridges, all of which have been in place since early this morning. That has resulted in a reduction of the number of vehicles that we had last week, which is up around three thousand at the highest point. And we've hardened the areas where the footprints exist. The Sir John A. McDonald, Wellington, Rito areas have not grown in size of new vehicles being able to embed themselves in there. The third area of it was enhanced intelligence operations and investigations. National, provincial, and local intelligence agencies increasing efforts to identify and target protesters who are funding, supporting, enabling unlawful and harmful activity by protesters. Investigative gathering and laying of charges. The number of charges we've laid has gone up, increasing, including cross-border investigations involving the FBI and national security. We have, through the efforts of Deputy Bell, Christiane Hino, the mayor and his staff, we've been able to shut down the Go Funding program. That's a temporary reprieve because the funds are already moving in different directions. We are now going after supply and fuel coming into the area through investigations and intelligence operations and interdictions, all of which were underway yesterday, fully underway today. Let me return to completing my answer, and I apologize. This is just trying, me trying to give a fulsome answer to an important question, so I apologize again. So, we have seen the installation of, sorry. I will give the board an update on latest numbers around what we've done in terms of enforcement investigations. I'll leave that to Deputies Ferguson and Bell after I wrap up, assuming you want those numbers, but they're available to you as updated as they can be. Ottawa residents are frustrated and angry. So are we, quite frankly. They have every right to be. Their lives in our city are being severely impacted by unlawful acts on our streets. The Ottawa Police Service, our policing partners are doing everything within our power. I think it's very germane to the way you framed your statement earlier on. We're doing everything within the power of the Police Services Act as it's been designed as legislation and as we have been resourced onto that legislation. I am doing everything in my power to keep the peace, keep our residents and our businesses safe, and allow a sense of normalcy to come back in, in the quickest and safest way possible. This is an unprecedented situation, but we have learned from our experience and, yes, our mistakes, and we're committed to doing better. And we make adjustments literally day by day, and sometimes on days like this, hour by hour. We are doing much, much more. We have deployed all available police officers, as I talked about. You will be in the process of swearing in sixty additional RCMP officers. By the end of this meeting, sixty more police officers, fully sworn and full use of force capabilities, will be deployed into our operational plan that will free up additional resources to go into our neighborhoods and better serve and protect the immediate vicinity as well as the rest of the city. We continue to erect barriers. We continue to deny access through bridges, roadways, and highways. Again, we cannot shut down the entire city. That would be as harmful or more so than the demonstration. But we're trying to interdict vehicles before they protest their vehicles and allow for the normal commerce and travel of city vehicles as much as we possibly can. We are actively collecting evidence to investigate all unlawful behavior. We have implemented through Crown Guidance a significant enhancement of our approach to criminal investigations in this matter. I can't provide much more information on that at this time. Otherwise, it would frustrate the efforts of our investigators to do very important work to impact and interdict the unlawful elements of the demonstration. We recognize there is unlawful activity, such as the building of structures that is ongoing as we speak. We are addressing these issues as swiftly and as safely as possible. For you this week, I stated that there may not be a policing solution to this issue. I think you just reflected that in your own words. Chair, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but your expression is more impactful and powerful than I was able to do so. And I appreciate you and I have different positions, and we can speak differently, but I do echo and validate your sentiments from what I could glean from what your statement said. So thank you for that. We have made efforts in conjunction with the mayor and city manager Steve Katalakis over the last seventy-two hours to engage directly with the federal government on a range of other options, including additional resourcing. That is what secured the sixty RCMP officers that you're swearing in today. We are seeking, we've been offered, and we are seeking additional offers, including analytical support, investigative support, Canada Border Services Agency supports, legislative and regulation, interprovincial supports, all of which we have explored, offered, and are commitments to move forward. Most importantly, our efforts around understanding what we are going through here locally in the city of Ottawa. And as you've articulated, recognizing that this is not a police-only, city-of-Ottawa-only challenge. It is, in fact, a national challenge. It requires all three levels of government, all three levels of policing and justice to be integrated around a sustainable, safe solution to this deplorable situation here in the city of Ottawa. However, the strains on our officers and the strains on our organization are showing. I can tell you, we have members of this service that are on literally their knees trying to continue on. We've canceled their days off. For some, it didn't matter. They haven't had a day off in twelve, thirteen, fourteen days. They are working twelve-hour shifts, fourteen-hour shifts, and eighteen-hour shifts. And they have their families to look after. They're dealing with COVID, and they have the range of human challenges that any person has. They come into work to fulfill their sworn office and do the best they can in these unprecedented situations that we're facing. While we've had tremendous support, and I cannot stress While we've had tremendous support and I cannot stress it enough, Chair, Board, I cannot stress it enough. Tremendous support from the Ontario Provincial Police Commissioner Tom Kurik. A tremendous leader. There's nothing we have asked for that he hasn't given and he's offered even more today just before this phone call. The RCMP Commissioner Brenda Lucky. It's always bad to name names and forget names. Uh, at least seven different municipal police services from Cornwall, Kingston, London, Durham, Toronto Police, York Region, Peel Region, Waterloo Region. I'm probably forgetting something and I shouldn't do that because they've sent their officers away from their families to come here for days on end and to work side by side, twelve-hour shifts and longer with our members to keep this city safe. The fact of the matter is we do need more help. And so you've asked a question that needs an answer. I'm going to give you my best answer shortly. I would invite my colleagues Trish and Steve to provide and Blair to provide their own insights as to what that might look like. I will frame it in the short, medium and long term. So short term, we need an additional surge of resources. Uh, I will leave that to Trish to articulate what those numbers are in the short term for us to manage the three-pronged approach as well as the overall framework of our plan. Containment of the occupation and demonstration, maintenance of the surge beyond the ability of our officers to not have days off. Uh, crowd management plans for the, the, the flare-ups of demonstrations on the weekends and the changes in nature of the demonstrations during the day, the criminal enforcement and intelligence operations being led by Deputy Chief Bell. Our ongoing efforts literally across the entire range of negotiation, liaison and compromise to reduce the impacts on our community as well as come to an end to this demonstration. The actions to remove the embedded demonstration and encampments. Uh, communications broadly internally to the board, to the mayor and council, to the broader community and, and the actual interdiction of supports, which includes funding and fuel and supplies into the demonstrators themselves. That is the overarching framework of which all of our plans are aligned to and where we need additional resources in the short, medium and long term. Let me talk about the medium and long term because I want to leave Deputy Bell and Trish Ferguson to really nail down the short term. And again, uh, and, and, and sorry, CEO Dunker. Medium term, this came to us in the middle of the winter. With sub-zero freezing temperatures minus thirty with a, with a frostbite warning from our own Ottawa Public Health. It's going to come again in the spring and it's going to come again in the summer and it will likely continue on. In the medium term, we need resources to sustain us beyond this current iteration. In the longer term, there's something that's changed in our democratic fabric and Chair, you articulated that beautifully and passionately early on. There's something that's changed in the democratic fabric of the nation. We have to anticipate that there will be similar type of my words demonstrations, your word insurrection that could afflict the nation's capital year in and year out. We do not have the legislation under the current Police Services Act. We do not have the resources under what is now currently described as adequate and effective policing resources. And we do not have the justice system framework or the multilateral agreements between three levels of government in order for us to predictably and effectively manage such situations going forward. Coming out of this, and there will be a coming out of this, but coming out of this, we're going to have to revisit the fundamental principles of the Police Services Act. How we are enabled through that act and how that act is integrated with other provincial statutes, federal statutes and agencies and governments that control it. Again, I appreciate I've said a lot there, but it's a very important question you've asked and it requires a thoughtful answer. And I've tried my best to do that. Again, I just want to conclude with some comments. We would like to be able to explain more about our operational plans beyond the public realm. Please understand if we provide too many details in this forum, it will frustrate if not create a failing point for some of the things we're trying to do. We want to keep you and the board as up to date as possible, as informed as possible and give you the best chance to ask questions. But some of the details and nuances, we may not be able to do in this forum. I just caution that in case there are questions that come later. And I offer what I can as a simple solution to go in camera. I will leave that to your good judgment, Chair. And do our best to comply within the laws, provide the full amount of information possible. And with that, I will ask Deputy Chief Ferguson first to give her thoughts on what resources, legislative changes or other enablements that will help with the core operation and then turn things over to Deputy Chief Bell. And finally, I would ask CEO Dunker for her own thoughts. Again, we, we can be, if given more time, more reflective and come back with a more detailed set of requests. But again, this is in the moment. Uh, Trish, over to you.
Thank you, Chief, and good afternoon, everybody. So obviously these are rough numbers, given that this was a, um, a last minute request, but what I can tell you is it takes us about four hundred and ninety-five officers for a twenty-four hour cycle to staff this right now. So the amount of officers we have simply dedicated to frontline for the Ottawa Police Service is four hundred and seventy-eight. So that tells you that it is every single platoon officer plus that we require to do this. This is now day eight. And so we have had, as the chief alluded to, help from a number of our partners and, and it's the only way we've been able to do this. For the city itself, um, for a twenty-four hour period, we have on average a hundred and fifty officers just to cover what we need across from Cumberland to, uh, Arnpryor. Uh, so that's just basic staffing of our cars to answer nine-one-one calls for this demo. For the footprint that we need to hold, for all the traffic positions that we need to have and, and shutting down the streets and you see there's calls for shutting down even more, but for us to do what we have done with what we have right now, it's two hundred and twenty-five officers to address that. And finally, for the surge that we announced on Friday morning, it was a hundred and twenty officers and that's over again, over a twenty-four hour period. So forty officers in those um, in those neighborhoods rotating. Um, right now I can tell you that we put out a hundred and sixty-four officers at our one o'clock briefing. So that is on top of, we had a number, uh, out earlier on. And I hesitate to give you exactly how many, um, officers are on the street right now for safety purposes. Obviously that, that puts their safety at jeopardy and I'm, I really don't want to be doing that. But I want to be able to explain to you and for everybody to have a really a good sense as to what, what we, uh, we need to get things going. In terms of legislative, obviously the nation's capital, we, we are dealing with a number of different locations. Confederation Park is a very good example and, and the national capital NCC has access or rather has a number of, of parks and, um, streets in the city. So there's, there's enforcement, uh, authorities that we are limited in what we can do. So I'll give you the example of Confederation Park. Uh, everybody wondering why we couldn't just go in there and, and tear everything down and kick everybody out. We are not the property owners of, of Confederation Park. And so we have to go through the NCC. Um, that takes some time, that takes some dialogue to make sure that we are, you know, having the, the conversations with the right people. Our officers on the ground, you know, while they're equipped with phones, they don't have the phone number for, for Mr. Nusbaum to be able to make that call directly. So some of those things take time. When we were in there last night, there was, um, indication that this was an indigenous, an indigenous protest or an indigenous demonstration. And so lessons learned, um, by not, uh, creating any, any further problems. We went straight to uh, engaging our indigenous elders, which we had already proactively included in in the, um, conversation and we were able to get them down and they helped and negotiated along with our provincial, our police liaison teams with the OPP provincial liaison team. And, uh, we got to a stalemate late into the night, but we had to let those things happen. Um, we needed to make sure that when we did get to a place where we said we can no longer negotiate, they're over. It was, it was done on our part in good faith and we provided every opportunity for those people to leave on their own and not escalate the situation further. So I give you that example as a reason that I know everybody's looking to Confederation Park saying, why don't you just go in there with bulldozers and take it down? There were children, there were women, there were a number of things in there. We assessed the safety. We went to make sure that we did not have any, any flammable situation. We brought in the fire department. All of these things take time and, and, and a lot of dialogue in order to be able to manage it in a way that we are not going to be putting anybody at undue risk or harm. And, and it's, it's difficult when you've got, uh, you know, a number of counselors and everybody saying, get in there and do it. And obviously the, the, the public is, is fed up with the situation and we totally understand that, but we cannot then throw all of the other things that we have learned from past, uh, demonstrations out the book, out the window. So I, I share that with you just as a, as a, a small story of what I think is happening on, on many street corners in this city during the last eight days because it's a very complicated, layered municipal, provincial and federal statutes that we need to keep in mind. I will turn it over to Steve now.
Uh, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, so in terms of intelligence, we continue to gather and, and gain intelligence of what the situation is. Um, our intelligence to date has been improving and growing. Our partners have been increasingly helping us to bring a more clear picture of what's occurring. Uh, we were fairly accurate in our estimates today. Uh, which is not a good thing because it's not who we want in our city, but it's a good thing from a, a planning and response perspective. Um, in terms of our investigations, to date, we've had over four hundred calls for service directly related to the protest. And from that, we initiated over fifty criminal investigations, including uh, eleven hate, hate crime related investigations that to date have resulted in the charges of four people relaying of seven different charges. That continued, that number continues to grow on a daily basis. We have dedicated investigative teams who are uh, aligned to the protest and responsive to everything that is being brought in. And we're starting to see an increase with the increased presence in, in center town of the market and lower town. We're beginning to see more, an increase in criminal interactions and an increase in our arrests to come in. Um, so that's the, where we are right now in terms of intelligence and investigations.
Sorry, Steve, can you lay out any additional resources, legislative change that we would need in short, medium or long term?
For sure, Chief. Thank you very much. So, um, I I believe that we are going to need an investment in all three areas that I'm responsible for. First one would be investigative resources. The chief, chief spoke at a high level of, um, of, an approach that we would be starting to get attained. That will take investigative resources to both support whatever sort of investigation we launch into as well as prepare what, whatever sort of, um, ultimate criminal prosecution that we would enter into. What I will say is we've had amazing cooperation from the Crown Attorney's Office uh, who continue to work with us on a daily basis in terms of how we attack this from a criminal code perspective. So I would, we would see, need to see an augmentation of, uh, investigators probably in the thirty to forty range to be able to help manage and take on this type of investigation in the very short term. Um, we will need increased intelligence resources, particularly as it would relate to cybercrime capacity and social media scanning. We know that the groups that we have, uh, are interfacing with have amazing social media capacities and skills and have the ability to widely spread a message and a narrative uh, that needs to continue to be followed up and investigated. So we would need to seek out increased cybercrime abilities and increased intelligence resources, particularly around social media. Uh, from an information perspective, we know we are taxing our, all of our frontline members and in our frontline members, I include our police communicators. They are, they are the brunt of the beginning of many, many calls of dissatisfaction uh, understandably, and they are extremely taxed in trying to manage the operations that we have established within the core as well as maintain a presence and of the ability for our service to respond to the rest of the city. We would need to see an increase and augmentation of our communications staff. Beyond that, as we get, uh, as we start to progress through the uh, next steps of the dismantling, the demobilization of the protest, we know that we're going to have evidence management, evidence gathering and evidence storage challenges. So we would need actual resources, physical buildings to be able to establish to maintain catalog and store the, the vast amount of evidence that we could be stealing, this could be um, sourcing or taking in as well as processing the people who may uh, be criminally charged as a result of this. Uh, beyond that, the only other area I would actually highlight would be around legal resources. We are extremely taxing our legal team to provide up-to-date, adequate uh, and forward-thinking and innovative legal services and legal perspectives on how to, how we can look at taking old legislation that doesn't fit the problem we have in front of us and utilizing it to be able to have, allow us to have success in, in finalizing this. So I do believe that we would need increase in our legal resources as well as the ability to have, um, advocacy for immediate, possibly short-term, but immediate legislative changes that would allow us increased powers in terms of enforcement, fining, ticketing. So that would be my immediate list.
Thank you, Steve. And Blair, any thoughts, um, uh, from, from your end?
Uh, I would just say, I think at this, at this point, I'm getting, uh, what I need and that I need quick access to the board and quick approvals on items such as the one um, on the agenda around the special constables. So, um, that, that, that's terrific. And if I can think of anything else, I will certainly, uh, let you know. Thank you.
And thank you, Blair. And again, we want to just recognize the efforts of, uh, uh, Chair yourself, uh, the mayor, uh, Steve Cantalacas in, in leveraging relationships with the federal government. While we haven't got an absolute promise for full cost recovery, we've had good indications there. This is going to be an expensive enterprise that will put significant pressure on the budget without a federal relief at the end of this. Um, and my final words, um, this is a siege. It is something that is different in our democracy than I've ever experienced in my life. Um, I don't know if I'd use the word insurrection chair, but it's, I don't have a word for it. So, um, it's not a demonstration. It's not an occupation. It's something. Um, and we don't have a police act that can adequately or effectively address this circumstance. But we will, as we have from the beginning, continue to do our very, very best with your support, the board's support, the mayor and city council's support. Um, and, and as we're seeing increasingly, the other two levels of government uh, coming in to support what we're doing here. So hopefully that begins to answer your important question. I'll turn things back over to you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Chief and to the two deputy chiefs for your answer. Um, and I appreciate the, the fulsome nature of the answer and the necessity for that. Um, I'm very focused on the immediate right now because I am concerned that we are not able to literally and figuratively put out all of the fires that are being started all over the place. And you know, Trish described Confederation Park, that's one site of many and it's happening all over the place. And so, you know, as much as it's interesting to talk about all the legal resources and everything down the road, right now what we need to know is what do you need right now? And it sounds very much like the answer to my question is we do not have the resources locally that we need to get this thing under control. So what I'm really looking to hear from you is what do you need from us? Do you want us to request the assistance of the province, the federal government? Do you want us to ask them to, uh, look to the military? What do you need to get this city back in the, in peaceful hands? That's what we need to know.
Okay. And Chair, again, um, we, we will take that away. I think the best thing I could do is take it away and try to detail the resources. You've heard some rough numbers from Trish. We've had to double our complement that we would normally have protecting the city um, and double it on a daily basis in order to maintain this level. Depending on the nature of operation that we go into, particularly around an interdiction enforcement operation, we've already had estimates from our public order commanders that we would need to bring in as many resources as there are in the province and potentially more than that. So we'll need to go away and, and provide a list of things, but there's no quick answer for what you're asking. It's a massive question that requires a very detailed response. We'll be happy to engage you as we get those numbers and then I don't know toward the process would be for governance around that. Um, but again, we're not waiting on this. We've been on a daily basis. I have a daily call with Steve Cantalacas, a daily call with the mayor's staff. Twice daily calls with yourself. I have daily calls with Brenda Lucky, Tom Kurik. Um, now into a cycle of daily calls with the public safety minister, deputy minister. Everything that we can possibly do, every leverage that we can possibly bring to bear, every agency we can bring in, we're doing that. There's just so much, so fast. There's just so much, so fast that things can come. As soon as they come, like we're doing with the RCMP officers, get them sworn in, get them on the road, get some resources di- directed back into community and quite frankly, give some of our people a rest for the first time in twelve days. So that's where we're at. I don't have any more information that we've been able to give you right now. We do not have sufficient resources to adequately and effectively address this situation while adequately and effectively providing policing in this city.
Thank you. And um I'm going to turn this over to the board members to ask their questions and then I'll come back on. So Member Smallwood.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. I, I apologize. My computer froze, so I've gone on to hand help. So I'm not sure if I, if this question was answered. But first of all, I, I just wanted to say thank you very much, Chief, uh Deputy Bell, Deputy Ferguson, or Acting Deputy Ferguson, uh Krista and Hannah. I mean, this has been a really challenging time for everybody. And I really appreciate the, just how challenging this has been. And uh all of the board members as well. It's uh, it's something that's keeping us very concerned and, and we want to see a resolution. One of the things that I, when I was hearing the, the reports and various people, uh two things came to mind. One was there earlier being a comment about there was some charter right um concern about stopping the movement of large vehicles, of trucks or stopping entering the city, getting the sense that that isn't the, the case, that there isn't a charter protection against the movement of vehicles. So hopefully that is the case. And that being the case, I'm wondering what resources do you need to stop these large vehicles from entering the, the, the core of the city, the downtown residential areas? I'm not concerned about the parliamentary streets, but the residential areas. And since I, I believe there are bylaws against idling of trucks and sounding horns, uh, do you have the resources to immediately stop? The, uh, I heard on the, when there was an injunction sought this afternoon, uh which is not going to be heard now until one o'clock on Monday, there was a comment that they would restrict their, their blaring of horns for twelve hours a day. Uh, these are serious health issues. This is harm being called to the um, the, the members of residents of the community. This is immediate harm being caused to them. And I want to know if there's something that can be done immediately, not waiting for an injunction on Monday, to stop the idling of trucks, the pollution and the noise and air pollution that's causing. Uh, and what resources do you need to go in and do that now? And this is something further the city can be doing. Is there something that we should be asking the city to do to help make sure that this, this gets stopped now, not next week? Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, Vice Chair. Uh, and I, I will leave it. Uh, I'm not sure that you fully understood or we've effectively explained the charter issues, but I would invite you to, to, to get a response from to get a response from um David White on that charter matter. Um, in regards to uh bylaws and that sort of thing, one of the list of items that we have discussed uh over the last several days is with uh Steve Cantalacus, the city manager. In fact, we escalated that to our discussions with the federal government today. Uh, we need tow trucks. We need heavy tow trucks. Um, uh, there are not enough in this, in the city. Uh, not the availability through private sector. That would be a significant issue. Should we start to try to challenge the full breadth of what's going on with horn blowing? Ultimately, we're going to have to potentially seize and impound vehicles around a range, range of number of issues. That's another significant resource need we need very quickly. Um, again, I, I don't know how to answer a question. How do we stop horn blowing? What resources would we need to stop that? Um, but that would be one area. We are seeing some interesting um legislation being passed provincially in the East Coast around trying to prevent the types of mass truck blockades that have been happening here in the nation's capital. Um, again, we've had discussions with our federal counterparts today around how that might work uh within Ontario and potentially as an interprovincial peace, peace between Quebec and Ontario, given the bridges. Um, so we're looking at literally, we've been asking the same questions. How do we change provincial by, uh provincial legislation, interprovincial legislation, national transportation legislation? How do we procure tow trucks municipally, provincially and federally? How do we join a procurement process with RCMP Commissioner Lucky, who has the same challenges out in Coots, Alberta, trying to find tow trucks for the trucks that are there in a two hundred and forty person town? I don't know if that answers your question, uh Vice Chair Smallwood, but uh the wish list continues. We need tow trucks and we need provincial, interprovincial legislation to, whether short term or long term, to be able to take out some of what's coming into the city uh before it gets here.
So if I just may follow up, Chair, and that, uh, does, I, I guess one of the things, and, and I, I think you've said, you've answered this before, but I'll ask it again. Is it not possible, for instance, I believe there is a currently ruling place about not idling for more than three minutes? There are trucks idling for twenty-four hours. Is it not possible to at least find these vehicles that are idling endlessly because of the damage it's showing? I know you've said that that could be viewed as uh escalating the situation, but there is harm being done by those idling vehicles. And I just, I, I think it's, I want to understand that that, about that, there is a full understanding of the harm that that is doing to the residents who are subjected to that and the noise. And once again, with the noise, I believe there's already a noise bylaw. So it's really a case of enforcing the existing rather than looking for new legislation.
Okay, sorry, I was a little distracted. So I will answer your question. Just Mayor, we're going to make an amendment in the public. Oh, well, I'm going to ask you if you could amend the, the second item around the RCMP officers. We've just been advised that we have, it's an additional two hundred and fifty.
In total.
In total, two hundred and fifty RCMP officers. Uh, so not the fifty or sixty, but two hundred and fifty uh that we're going to need to amend. Uh, and, and then we'll get them deployed as quickly as we can. That's just good news. Very, really good, good news in the middle of a board meeting.
Um, so, so with that, with that announcement, but will that, I guess that means one third of that would be on, if you say, uh, you know, two hundred, you're only going over two hundred and fifty. You'd only have, be able to access one third of those at a time because of shift requirements. Is that right?
No, it depends on how Deputy Chief Ferguson decides to deploy them. So again, we've just found this out in real time. We'll figure out how to best deploy them to address the biggest risks in the most effective way possible.
Okay.
Um, I, I should, uh, I'm sorry, again, we're just answering in real time. Just to be clear, from the day where the uh protest, the original convoy came across the Manitoba border into Ontario, we embedded our police liaison teams into the OPP operations. From the moment we took over direct um coordination negotiation with the seven original convoys, we have been negotiating with them not to come. If they do come, to come lawfully and peacefully and respectfully. And every day that they have been here since they've come to address things like the horn blowing, the diesel idling, everything that you have asked about, the communities complaining about, our police liaison team members have from the very first day tried to accomplish the negotiation. And we continue to do that to this day. Our police liaison team members are probably the most overworked next door traffic officers in terms of long days, no days off and intense interactions with the core of the demonstrators. We've done everything we can and will continue to do so regardless of whether or not an injunction is heard again at one o'clock tomorrow. We've reduced the number of trucks that are in the downtown core associated to those seven uh trucks. So again, that's through the negotiation with the PLT in order to reduce the overall impact of noise from the overall number of trucks. I will turn things over to Trish Deputy Chief Ferguson to maybe provide some more answers in the short term to your important question, Vice Chair. Thank you. Trish?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I, I just want to maybe set the, the stage a little bit for uh what you're suggesting, Member Smallwood, would work on a reasonable person, that they would be provided a ticket for behavior and then that behavior would cease. But this is not the crowd that we're dealing with. And so even to uh, to stop somebody from blowing their horn, I have watched outside my window all day, officers trying to pull people over. Um, first of all, it, it puts the motoring public at, at risk. But even when they do get them pulled over, um, there's nothing to stop them. They, they are infr- given the infraction for that moment in time. And there's nothing to stop them from driving three blocks and beginning that horn going again. So I just want to set that stage because, you know, if we're dealing with reasonable people, um, then it is a deterrent. But this is not the crowd that we're dealing with. So just to paint that.
Appreciate your answer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Smallwood. Member King.
Uh, thank you, Chair and Chief. Residents, as we know, are being intimidated. Roads, transit and city services are being obstructed. Parks and other facilities such as the baseball stadium of My Ward are being used as staging areas to provide logistics and transit and store hazardous materials for unlawful occupation. And residents frankly are fed up with uh the truck convoy noise and pollution that goes on for twelve hours a day and which has been making life absolutely intolerable. You outlined a strategy in response to the Chair's uh question. Residents, along with my council colleagues in the downtown core, have seen that the surge and contain strategy over the past two days has not resulted in a meaningful increase in police officers in cit- in centertown, Sandy Hill, Lower Town or the Byward Market. When will we have a comprehensive plan of action to end this demonstration, since that's under your jurisdiction, that addresses all of these concerns, especially concerning a substantial increase of police patrols in neighborhoods? And when will that plan be communicated to the board, to the council and to the public?
Thank you, Member King. I really appreciate the question. I can again sense the frustration you have and you're championing for the very important needs of your constituents. And uh obviously you're speaking on behalf of a few other councillors who are not present here or are not able to speak. So I, I appreciate that. Take it to heart and take it seriously, as I do everything in regards to my responsibilities and responsibilities as a policeman. So thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate that. Um, we've just outlined the framework of the plan. Uh, we have talked about the specific uh portion of the plan that relates to the surge and contain that has been implemented. It was detailed in the press conference yesterday. The board received all communication materials and briefing notes associated to it. If you haven't received it, we can send it to you again. Um, we have talked about it here today. Uh, and we have deployed those officers in even bigger numbers than we, than we presented yesterday because of our ability to free up officers with the OPP arriving and the RCMP arriving. So we actually have a bigger number of officers that are being deployed. And as you've just heard in real time, we have an additional two hundred, hundred and sixty officers, whatever, coming in on top of what we were promised. And they will go into augmenting the very things that you talked about. Exactly what we said we did, we were going to do, we have done. So I'm not sure where the lack of understanding is around the commitment to that surge of officers and their level of engagement within the community. We've also said we cannot cover everything and be everywhere in the way that we would like to be around this. As the Chair has said, insurrection, mad democratic attack. This is something that is just not normal. And we have provided the best information with the best plan, with the extremely limited resources in order to provide that level of safety and security for your constituents that so desperately need it and absolutely deserve it.
Well, a strategy that you outlined is different i- in my mind than a comprehensive plan that gives direction uh both to the board, to the council and to the public as to uh the general trajectory of when we'll be uh exiting uh this demonstration. So I'm going to continue to ask that question uh because from what you outlined before, all the multiple areas, whether it's a short term, medium term and long term, it's evident to us that we need to have a comprehensive plan of action, a full guide in a sense uh that we can take to the public to say this is the way that we are going to work ourselves out of this scenario. So that's my expectation if we're looking for adequate policing in this jurisdiction. Um, the last question I have uh does involve the baseball stadium. Um, we know that that was at one point, a, a point for overflow of, of parking um to ensure that there was less um congestion in the core. It has now transformed into a staging area. So I want to know uh what is the plan to uh deal with uh the staging areas such as the baseball stadium that have emerged uh not just in My Ward but across the city?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilor King. And I did outline the eight point framework around which the comprehensive plan was built. And I gave you significant details in regards to the latest three elements of it, which includes the surge and contained portions of it. Should the board want even more details, I've made an offer to provide as many more details as I can lawfully within the confidential um in camera meeting. Um, and we have provided even more details in direct confidential briefings to the Chair, the Mayor and Council. Um, if you feel you are inadequately advised of the quality and quantity of that information, I'd ask you to consider that as a, as a conversation with the board. And we will provide as much information as we are lawfully able to do so, as we have been doing so from the very beginning. Uh, in regards to your question about the baseball stadium, I'll turn things over to Trish Ferguson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Member King. Um, so since uh your email of last night, um, I think I followed up with you, the sergeant attended. Um, we have been working with people at that site uh to try and, and I say with people at that site, they, they have been to a point cooperative. Uh, but we do recognize that that is now become a, a staging area, if you will, and a refueling area for them. So we are looking at um addressing and I, I can't reveal all of the details of it, but we are, are looking into that area, determining what any, uh, working with the fire department, any um hazardous material, any of that type of thing, what um avenues are available to us to enforce uh the, the, the laws and, and to make sure that that's rendered safe.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Member King. Member Nerman.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh, first of all, I wish to thank each and every member of the frontline service of police, the fire, paramedic, city, OPP, RCMP and members from the other cities assisting the OPS in maintaining the law and order and safety of the residents to the best of their abilities. Uh, my question are to the Chief, Deputy Chief Bell, or the Event Planning Chief, Acting Deputy Chief Ferguson as appropriate. Uh, Chief, there is a strong public perception that a different policing standard was applied to the protests, the current protest which is going on than to other protests that have taken place in the city. I hope you can provide some clarity around that perception and perhaps correct it. In your media release of February fourth, that, that was yesterday, you say, uh, it was stated by the OPS, and I quote, "The Ottawa Police Service and City of Ottawa will be utilizing concrete and heavy equipment barricades to create no excess roadways throughout the downtown core." Uh, during my study, uh, which I have done recently, uh, since morning, the Supreme Court of Canada in the matter of Clayton, which was decided in two thousand and seven, had, have elaborately, elaborately discussed and deliberated the powers of the police in common law for employing the roadblocks. So can I ask why such barricades were not employed or planned on January twenty eighth? Ie, before the start, start of this convoy protest in Ottawa? And if those would have been planned, can you please lay out would the situation would have been different? What we are seeing today?
Uh, thank you very much, Member Nerman. I'll just reflect on your opening remarks in regards to comparing this demonstration to other demonstrations, and I will reflect on the Chair's comments herself. Uh, this is an under city under siege. This is a threat to democracy. This is a nationwide ins- insurrection. This is madness. Uh, I would concur, not necessarily word by word, but with the sentiment, there is nothing to compare between what we're going through now and anything else we've done in the city in the past. With that said, I will turn things over to Deputy Chief Ferguson for her comments around the transportation plan based on the threat intelligence information we had two weeks ago, which led to our plan for last weekend and what we have learned through better intelligence, the lessons learned and, and other jurisdictional approaches, what we've put in place for this weekend. Trish, over to you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Member Nerman. Um, I, I don't think we could have predicted um what this has turned into. Um, and, and you know, I will go back to the Chair's um comments at the beginning. Uh, this is unprecedented uh in policing times and in, in, in my, I will be twenty-eight years tomorrow with the Ottawa Police Service, never seen anything like it. We plan for events, we plan for large scale events, we plan for dignitaries arriving uh throughout the city, and we are really good at that. Uh, our members know what they're doing and, and that's what we had planned for, was a potentially weekend long demonstration on what this was going to be. We quickly had to reassess and pivot. We quickly had to reassess and pivot, and over the course of the week, we maintained negotiations. We, we did what, quite frankly, the public expects us to do now, which is to de-escalate and maintain a level of safety and obviously for those involved. We are to provide the lawful right to demonstrate, and that's what we did initially. That's what we were looking at. And throughout the week, we realized that, I mean, earlier than that, but we realized that this was going to be a longer, more protracted event. Our members have been negotiating the whole way through and quite frankly, doing our very best to keep a lid on what has been for our members, some really contentious, heated, volatile, and dangerous situations. And we were not staffed appropriately to do that. And so this weekend, having canceled everybody's days off, we have now provided what we, what we are hoping will be that necessary flow. We recognize that the neighborhoods around the the footprint are being very negatively affected, and we are doing everything we can to to make sure that they are getting the attention that they need and, and starting with very basic addressing bad behavior, addressing menacing nuisance, intimidation, all of that. So in terms of our approach, we will continue to do that. We will be a presence as much as we can in those neighborhoods. And our traffic folks are, now we can have them assigned to what they do best, which is addressing Highway Traffic Act violations in and around the area, dangerous driving that we have seen, that we have heard from in the neighborhoods. We have been working with Kim Ayotte's team and bylaw, embedding them with our neighborhood resource officers. We have been in touch with the business improvement associations, doing everything we can to make sure that their needs are are being heard and addressed as soon as we have the facilities and the ability to do so. So I don't know if I fully answered your question, Member Nerman, but.
Thank you. Thank you. No, I have a, of course, by your, you are saying that this type of crowd was not anticipated, or it is much beyond the normal. So will it be reasonable to say there was a lack of intelligence and you could not anticipate this?
Maybe, Member Nerman, I'll ask Deputy Chief Bell to speak to that, please.
Thank you for your question. So we gathered a large amount of intelligence as, from the time the convoys started, as they moved across the country, we worked with our RCMP OPP partners. And as they came into the National Capital Region, we expanded that to continue to work with our Surtaita Quebec and Gatineau Police Partners. We brought in a fantastic amount of intelligence as this progressed. All the intelligence we had indicated that there could be small groups that stay, could stay longer, but predominantly the approach of the groups would come, would come and then go, as is normal within the course of what we normally see some two to three hundred times a year in the nation's capital. So as, as we continue to say, this is unprecedented. There has never been a protest that's turned into an occupation like this on this scale in any city across Canada. I'm not sure in any city across North America. This is a new phenomenon we're seeing. This is a new tactic to be used around civil disobedience that has never been seen before. So the intelligence we had did not indicate that it would go on and continue because it's never been done to this, this extent before.
Thank you, Deputy Bell. And my final, final comment or building on that would be, as you would have seen from the emails, from the media, and the proactiveness, and rightfully, the residents, the citizens are fed up. Do you have, and I'm building on what Member King has said, is there any shorter, medium plan in hand which you have, or it will be just wait and watch?
Member Nerman, thank you. I can again get the sense of frustration that you're articulating on behalf of the province that appointed you and your sense of what Ottawa should be about and what Canada should be about. I would I would reflect on wait and watch as a characterization of all of what we briefed the board on. Someone like yourself who has taken a veil of ride-alongs with police officers and knows the dedication and the hard work and the dynamics of their job, I think you actually asked for a ride-along during the protest. That would not have been safe, but at some point, perhaps, you or other board members would like to avail yourselves of a ride-along, and you can then at that point decide if what we are doing is waiting and watching. Again, I reflect on the question, again, meaningful and passionate question that Councilor King asked and that you've echoed. We have done our very best, and I think more so, well, not I think, I have provided to this board around this unprecedented demonstration, more information, more briefings, more daily reports, more detailed information than I've ever done in any other operation in my entire career. If you need more, we've made a suggestion to take a veil of your own in-camera session to receive more detailed information, what we can, as up-to-date as we can. If you are trying to ask us, is there a date that we can set your calendars on when this will be over? I can't provide that to you, sir. It would be irresponsible of me to do so.
Thank you, Chief, and I would request Chair Deans, if he, if he has a time, and the Chief and deputies have a time, that after this session, we move in-camera for further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Nerman. Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll just echo my thanks for all of the hard work and efforts of the command team and the entire OPS leading up to this eighth day of demonstration. So during the hearing today at an Ottawa court over an injunction sought on behalf of downtown residents, a lawyer representing three protesters said they are willing to refrain from honking their horns between eight P M. and eight A M. The judge at the end advised them just to honk at noon or for a shorter time. So this is tangible progress due to communication. And if we want to make further progress, what are the pros and cons of a phased approach to gradually remove some trucks while discussions continue? Can they continue having, can you continue having meetings and mediation to have progress towards ending the Ottawa demonstration? What could be achieved with a plan or an agreement to have three mediated sessions or meetings? And I realize this may well be with public officials, but I just, yeah, so I just wanted to say that today and take any input you have on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Member Johnson. I will put Trish in the batter's box. She'll talk further about the police liaison officers, the role they've played so far to date in this successful role. Not anywhere near where we need to get to, but success has come a lot from it. And I referenced earlier on in my comments, I think I briefed the board, at least the board chair, over the last several days. In the last seventy-two hours, myself and City Manager Steve Cantalacas have been in meetings, Republic Safety Canada, the deputy ministers, several ministers, from, sorry, several deputy ministers from several different federal ministries. While it was a very difficult first day, we made very quick progress and there has been an increased aperture on behalf of the federal government to not only provide material supports, as you've just heard about again, in real time here in the board meeting, but consider ways that they can through discussion, mediation, assist in, in a quick, safe, and sustainable contribution to our efforts here. And while it's really still in the exploratory stage, it is a daily effort by two of the top civil servants, myself and Steve Cantalacas, supported by the the Mayor, to move that forward. I don't know, quite frankly, of any situation that could be described in the terms you've heard from the Chair, the terms you've heard from me and my colleagues on the executive, that would not have some continuous element of negotiation and mediation to achieve a sustainable, safe solution. I outlined in that, I outlined that in my plan twice already today and other times, that negotiation is a core component of the framework around which we are trying to accomplish a swift end to this demonstration and return this city to normalcy. So hopefully that, that answers your upper-end question. I don't know.
It does answer that, Chief. It does. It was the upper-end question, because I do hear, have heard, and have heard from you all week of the good work your officers are doing to, to negotiate all, I think you said even every hour, asking protesters to leave. So, so really, I was looking to hear what you just shared, which I wasn't aware of, of this bigger picture mediation. So thank you. That really, that really answered that question for me. And I guess one other question, this relates to a comment, I think it was you who made it earlier about the need for more legal resources. Is that something that we need to urgently be assisting you with at this meeting, or is it something we can wait as the days unfold? I just wasn't quite sure how I heard that. Thank you.
It was Deputy Chief Bell who made the comment, and I completely validate that comment for a short-term and a longer-term standpoint. From a longer term, you'll know that we made a budget request, so it was granted by the board for privacy lawyer, not anticipating this, but to support the call referral program and integration through community safety wellbeing. What Deputy Chief Ferguson is, sorry, Bell is talking about is actual legal assistance for us to find uncharted territory. Steve, do you want to expand on that and give a sense of, is this a short or medium-term effort?
Thank you, Chief, and thank for the question, Member Johnson. I think it's both a shorter and a medium term. This is, you've said it a bunch of times, this is unprecedented. We have archaic would be a way to put it. We have old criminal code legislation. We have a provincial HTA framework. We have municipal bylaws, and none of them are specifically centered or situated to directly address a situation like this. But within there, there is the ability for us to look at the legislation, look at areas that are not commonly used, and try and leverage that to give us some better legal ground standing to end it, and then to have prosecutions that result from it. That will require legal minds, legal perspectives, and legal advice to be able to do that. I can tell you, we've had amazing legal advice through our own internal legal services. We've leveraged legal services through the City of Ottawa, through David White. We have amazing cooperation and participation by our Crown Attorney's Office. So we do have a capacity around that. It is an area that we are really gonna, we are really starting to double down on, and really starting to focus on. So augmented resources, when you say what more do you need? That is an area that I think will pay great dividends for us and one that we really need to focus on to bring us some new areas of leverage.
Anything further, Member Johnson?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Meehan.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Command. Can I just express my frustration with everything on behalf of our community? I think there was a lot of hope yesterday, Chief, when you outlined the surge and contain strategy and the sense of urgency to get this thing under control. Despite that, I think people are expressing frustration because they're not seeing any results. To, to hear that we need legal advice on, on what can be done to clamp down on some of the behaviors is, it's baffling. There are, there is criminal behavior happening down there. And I think if we could see the officers in the neighborhoods, have we arrested, have we gone in and arrested the people who are caught, like, who are causing trouble at night? I think if we could see some concrete things happening, maybe people wouldn't be so frustrated. We see Quebec City taking action. We see Toronto taking action. I mean, obviously with hindsight, look at what's going on here, but at the same time, you need officers. We're getting more officers, but we need to be told if there's a concrete plan in place, that we can start arresting people. How do we know that things are going to blow up if we haven't done anything except monitor and keep the peace? This, this can't continue, and this is day eight. Can I just say that knowing that we haven't been in touch with the NCC to decide about policing Confederation Park is mind-boggling to me? Can we, do we, have we not put all the levels of government and the decision-makers in a room to determine, because this is an unprecedented situation, that we have to take unprecedented decisions and move? Because we're giving the signal to all these people who are coming into town that it's a free-for-all. You know, they can take tires off trucks. They can put up buildings. They can bring in fuel. They can take over our stadium. We've given them the signal that it's a common party in our, in our town. And, and I'm expressing frustration, not just as a board member and a city councillor, but as, as a resident of the city, to see our colleagues and our fellow residents downtown being so hard-put upon. I believe it when I hear my city councillors, the city councillors downtown say there, there's no police presence in the neighborhoods, and people have been left on their own. We want to, we want to know what the plan is. We want to know concretely what is going to happen. Are we going to start making arrests? Or do we just wait for more intelligence? I'm assuming other cities are getting intelligence, but they're still taking concrete action. So please, I apologize if I'm off-base here as a board member. But we're not getting answers. We're not getting the answers that we require here. Please, I'm begging you, give us some answers. What's going to be done here?
Great. Thank you, Member Meehan. Again, as you've expressed and others on the call, great passion and empathy for those that have suffered the most, and as a long-resident of Ottawa, a frustration to see your city in the circumstances. As a new resident of Ottawa, I share that in every aspect that you've articulated so well. You asked a question about whether or not we had a level of coordination going into this. I will ask Deputy Chief Ferguson to describe the Intersect model around which this and all of our other operations are built on. I've then asked Deputy Chief Bell to talk about the arrests and the charges that we have laid and the investigations that are underway and the status as much as we can share on a call like this. So Trish, if you can help the member to understand how we integrate with all the other agencies, not just policing, but NCR-related agencies, and then over to Steve.
I can, Chief. Thank you, Member Meehan. The Intersect is the National Capital Region, and it involves all of the parties in the area, and we have monthly calls to share information. I can tell by your reaction that that's not what you're interested in hearing right now, and I, I can certainly appreciate we are as frustrated as you. But every one of these situations that arises, we, we can't take the law into our own hands. You demand that of us to, we have to be the level head, and we have to be the ones who are responding based on the authorities that we have got, and they don't change in this situation. No one has wanted us with powers to arrest if we don't have them. We still have to follow the Charter of Rights. We still have to go by the Trespass to Property Act. If, if the NCC is the owner of the Confederation Park, we have to get their approval before weighing in on those things. So we are, we are trying to abide by all of these things because there's no point in making arrests and, and a whole lot of effort and energy if it's only going to be tossed out later in court because we've, we haven't abided by it. We, we know these things from past protests, from other people's decisions, from, from what's happened through the courts. What I will say is places like Quebec City, Toronto, they have learned from us, absolutely. We're not saying we didn't make any mistakes. We're saying we are learning as we go on a lot of these things, and we are doing the best we can. Every one of us is.
So we cannot, can we not get the NCC to give us approval to go onto Confederation Park and dismantle this core, this, this party central?
We have that, and I can tell you that we have made progress in the last three hours. While I've been on calls with people, that's happening. I can't tell you exactly what's happening right now because I can't be there. But I can tell you that our folks have been, they haven't abandoned the, the goal here. They are working through it methodically and in, by lawful powers that we have. And we, nothing has changed. We have, as I said, have not been granted all kinds of new powers because this has happened in our city, as much as we would love.
Everybody has power in this city, except the police and residents. That's what, that's the message that we're giving to the protesters in this city. That's what, that's the message that we're giving to the protesters in this city. That's, I'm sorry, that's what I'm speaking on behalf, not just myself, I'm speaking on behalf of very frustrated residents. We appreciate everything that the police are doing. We do, and I I understand that they're exhausted. But this is day eight. And we need to know that this is going to end. And right now, I think, everybody, I think, if if you're listening to this, I think there's nothing that indicates that we're not going, we're not in for more more days of this. So I'll just stay quiet from now on. I apologize. Yes, I am passionate, but I have to be on behalf of everybody that that is feeling very, very helpless right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Meehan.
Did Member Meehan want to hear about the arrests? I just wasn't sure if that was the end of her question.
If you, if, yes, I'd love to hear about who's been arrested. And I'd like to know what's going to happen tonight when there's bonfires and more parties and more honking. I'd like to know what's going to happen.
Great, thank you. And and I share your frustration about when this is going to end. I'd like to know when there'll be an end to COVID. What was the detailed plan to end COVID? But that was an unprecedented pandemic. And there is no detailed plan for these things. But Deputy Chief Bell, could you provide an update on the status of our criminal arrests, criminal investigations, hate crime investigations, multi jurisdictional investigations?
Yep, thank you very much, Chief. So as I indicated earlier, we have over four hundred calls for service directly to the protest area. That's resulted in the initiation of fifty criminal investigations, eleven of which are hate crime investigations. From that, we've had so far four persons charged with a total of seven offenses. There are several investigations, all of the fifty of the investigations are continuing, the other ones have been culminated by charges, including that is the mischief around two of the unknown soldier. That investigation does progress and is progressing well, and we hope to have announcements on that in the coming days, as well as some threats that we've received to various public figures that has resulted in an investigative cooperative investigation with the Federal Bureau of Investigations in the United States, and we hope to have positive announcements around culmination of that in the near future. We have dedicated teams that are from both a hate crime perspective and a criminal investigative perspective that are following up actively and aggressively to charge, to investigate and charge people involved in criminal activities around the protest.
Okay, thank you, Member Meehan. Member Swayta?
Thank you, Chair, and I also really want to thank the Chief and all the members of the Police Service for all the hard work. And I really want to urge everyone to stay patient and calm and just everybody on every side of this issue to remain peaceful. Times are getting a little bit more tense, and you just need to, everybody remain calm to ensure that there's a successful and peaceful resolution to this. Chief, you know, I know you mentioned that you have a lot of resources from the province and from the federal government. And that's great. It's going to help alleviate the pressure on on the OPS members. And also have more more boots on the ground. But has there been any attempt for any political resolution to this matter? Because I understand, you know, the policing aspect is one aspect and a very important aspect. However, I'm just wondering if there's more of a political angle to this and is that something you can share with us?
Thank you very much, Member Swayta. And again, I've attempted to, but maybe not effectively. You know, from the start of the week, as I was reflecting on the first four or five days of this situation, it was clear to me that it was not going to be a lone policing solution to the circumstances that the Chair has already so eloquently described in her own way, and others have echoed in their own way. And it was at that time we started to work even more closely with, through the Chair and her help and Steve Kanalakis to get meetings with the mayor. Deputy mayors and other councillors that were involved directly. Member King has mentioned earlier on, Councilman Bernard McKenney, Flurry, Leeper in the downtown areas, all were involved in those discussions. So we have elevated our operational plan to involve engagement with the municipal level. I have had, and I've reported to the Board and to Council several times this week, I have had direct conversations with Minister Jones, Swiss General, Deputy Minister of Swiss General Mario Di Tomaso, to engage their efforts in not only providing material resources, but to raise situational awareness and to engage, encourage them to have their own ministerial and interministerial discussions around how they can help to support our efforts here in Ottawa, and to alert them even at that point that this was going to be a situation that was already nationwide and was going to spread to other locations in the province, and which indeed it has in Toronto, in Sudbury, in Windsor, in Hamilton, and other locations. I've told you, I think, two occasions again this evening, the efforts of Steve Kanalakis and myself on the last three days, two different meetings with the federal government, some of which has resulted in material resources like the two hundred fifty plus officers in the RCMP, all of which were accomplished on Thursday evening into Friday, and as a result of today's phone call, which Deputy Chief Bell joined me on today. We have encouraged material resources for our policing operations and received significant, particularly from the province, well, from all three levels of government, municipal, provincial and federal have all made significant police resource contributions to our efforts over the last eight days. And we have had from the City of Ottawa indications from the federal government that they're understanding our context here and appreciating that there are other opportunities to support us beyond the policing public safety realm. I obviously cannot speak for any other level of government, municipal, provincial or federal, but we've had a tremendous response locally. We are having an increasingly strong response federally, and there are lines of communication open provincially, all of which myself and my command team have been directly involved in facilitating, if not actually leading those efforts. I think more can and should be done in those areas, and I've had communication, formal communication with Chair Deans on that matter and encouraging the Chair and the Board to consider all avenues around that. I think that is why this was called today. I think that's why the question was asked by the Chair, and I think that's the bulk of the information we've provided her today. We need people, we need assets, we need capability, we need legal advice, we need investigators, we need intelligence. We'll need a paycheck somewhere down the road, otherwise we're going to have some strong budget issues. But most of all, we need a solution that is beyond the police solution for something that is not a policing issue. It's a societal issue. And again, the Chair has eloquently described that more more so than I could. So I don't know if that answers your question, sir. It has been part of our strategy, a developing part of our strategy increasing over the last week, and I suspect will continue to increase as we go forward.
That's the 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 main point I was trying to ask, Chief, was that we know that you you're you're doing your best and you've gotten many resources from various levels of government. It was more, how do we address the underlying societal issue? I mean, obviously, these protesters are here and came from every corner of the country to protest an underlying issue. And it's it's basically fallen our laps and in your lap, Chief. And that's why I was hoping to see if there was any indication that our our political leadership is going to get involved and address the societal issues that you mentioned. So, thank you very much, Chair.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. So thank you to the board members for your questions. Chief, I called this meeting today to ask a specific question, which was, do you have the resources you need to provide adequate and effective policing in the City of Ottawa? And the answer that I heard from you is no. Even though you got in the middle of the call two hundred and fifty more RCMP officers, what what has been described in all of the open fronts all over the city is that you are overwhelmed. We, the police service has been overwhelmed and that this is bigger than the police service. And I needed to hear that answer today because we need to take extraordinary action, and maybe it's something that Member Swayta was getting at. But I have some questions for our legal counsel, David White, because what I'm hearing on this call is, you know, we're we're taking one criminal charge at a time, but there are so many people out there engaged in a broader act of mayhem that we need, we need to be able to bring it all under control. And I'm wondering what levers there are. I'm wondering if we could be using, and this is to you, David White, if we could be using section sixty-three of the Criminal Code, unlawful assembly, and if it would be possible to get a judge to declare under that section of the Criminal Code an unlawful assembly, which I understand would allow the mayor to then declare a riot and and turn would allow us to do some mass arrests. Now, of course, we would need people to do that, but it would at least allow us to address the situation. I know others have talked about an injunction, so I would like to hear the legal aspects of what we can do to bring this under control now.
Councillor, all of those things are things that my office and my team are looking at, all in conjunction with their colleagues with the Ottawa Police. There is no singular answer. As you've heard from a policing perspective, there's no singular legal answer as to what levers we might pull, what orders we might obtain to bring this to an end. The work that my office is doing is all with a view of assisting and supporting the operational plans that are being put in place by Ottawa Police and their their law enforcement colleagues. So with respect to to section sixty-three, we have looked at that from our perspective, Chair, that is a somewhat archaic section. We have not actually been able to find any occasion where it's been invoked. And again, you know, doing, taking these steps, even taking the steps of an injunction, for example. One, there are, there are certain challenges that are associated with that in the, from an operational context. There are challenges that that come from a legal context as well. As you, as you saw today with the the effort to obtain an injunction in the the class action that's been commenced, the the, you know, the judge hearing that opined that he's not even sure how he would frame an order that would be effective and enforceable. So these are all things that, as I say, my office is examining. And we will provide updates, you know, either through through the police as those kind of operational imperatives develop, or through council. Certainly, if we believe that there is an effective tool that can be deployed, then that is something that we're looking at.
Mr. White, how long will it take? Because we are in such a crisis situation. I would think we would want to be in court today asking if we could use the Criminal Code, section sixty-three, to declare an unlawful assembly. We need to get on with this now. So like, I don't, I don't know what the legal roadblocks are. I understand that you have to put a case together, but this is an urgent situation. So how long will it take to get to court to get a declaration that we need to arrest this situation?
Councillor, again, or Chair, my apologies, Chair, whether the 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 route to resolving this is one that that ends with mass arrests is not a decision that my office can make, as you can appreciate. As to whether that is a viable tool is a discussion that that obviously we have with our our colleagues. We're in constant contact with the Chief's legal counsel in that regard. As I say, if there is a view that that these are an effective tool that will, that can serve to bring us to a peaceful conclusion, then those are certainly things that we will pursue.
Would asking the mayor to declare a state of emergency have any immediate positive impact on this situation?
Chair, from the standpoint of legal authority, the the declaration of an emergency under the Emergency Management and Social Protection Act does little. It may provide some relief from the, some of the strictures that we operate under from a procurement standpoint, but it does not imbue the mayor or the the city with any additional legal authority. There are provisions, for example, if the province declares an emergency, they are, there are specific powers that exist in in the premier and in the provincial cabinet. But from the, you know, beyond the the kind of symbolic value of a declaration of a state of emergency under the provincial legislation, there's no additional authority that that would provide either to the city or to the police.
Mr. White, can you perhaps tell us who has the authority to declare a state of emergency that will give us the tools that we need to bring this to a halt? Is it the Province of Ontario? Is it the federal government under the Emergencies Act? Who is it?
Chair, I regret, I'm just, I'm not in a position to to tell you as to which level of of government or or who might exercise the authority to bring this to an end, quite frankly, without an idea as to what will, what is necessary to bring this situation to an end. As you've heard from the Chief and others, the the situation that the City of Ottawa finds itself as the as the the place that this is happening. This is, it is certainly from from my experience, this is unprecedented. There are authorities, as you say, with respect to declarations of emergency. The federal legislation, I think what you're referring to is the Emergencies Act, that that was passed in nineteen eighty-eight as the as the successor to the War Measures Act. There are extraordinary powers that are available under that. That is, as you can expect, an extraordinary step. There are, you know, there are sections, we don't obviously deal with it with the municipality. There are sections that that provide for the declaration of a public order emergency. But I am not aware of any instance that they have been invoked, certainly in decades.
Well, this, in my mind, is an extraordinary emergency, and we need extraordinary measures. And I believe that we need to ask every level of government to use the powers and the authorities that they have to declare the emergencies that we need to bring this situation to a peaceful ending. This, we cannot allow this kind of terrorism in our community to continue in this way. And so I would implore our legal minds to tell us what we need to do today, who we need to ask, for what authority to help us to bring this to a conclusion. Member Nerman?
Thank you, Chair. You have raised a good point, and maybe David White can either endorse it or correct me. Coming back on section sixty-three of the Criminal Court, I don't think there is any roadblock or we need any judicial declaration under section sixty-three. I think police can simply invoke that power.
Chair, with respect to, you know, again, I would simply reiterate as to what what are considered to be effective tools that will serve to resolve this without escalation, without violence? That is, that is a discussion that we are having regularly with our colleagues at the Ottawa Police. As I say, if if, you know, the 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 operational view is that that will allow this matter to be resolved in a peaceful fashion, that is something that we will certainly pursue.
Thank you, David. I think I will, I will build on what Members Swayta and then Chair Deans have said that if that is the intention, and of course, there may be a a political will or political solution to this, and we should be looking at all the options. And Chief has been saying that all options are on the table. So possibly I would like to hear what my other relevant members have their thoughts going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Nerman. Just want to, I, I, this is very, very important, and we need to get to the bottom of it. I'm also mindful that our police service, we're taking time, so we have to be cautious about that too. Member Swayta?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. White. Mr. White, just building on what Member Nerman said and what the what the Chair was saying, we find ourselves that we have our local Chief of Police having to deal with, We find ourselves that we have our local chief of police having to deal with, you know, not only a local issue, but a regional, nationwide and international issue. And I just want to, you touched on something. You mentioned that even if Section 3 is invoked, whether we can invoke it, whether the chief can invoke it or whether a judge rules on it. What about the enforceability? So even though it's invoked, the question becomes, is it enforceable? Are we able to enforce it given the situation?
Chair, I defer to the Chief and his team. That is one of the challenges that we are always faced with, with respect to, for example, even in the context of an injunction. And as you may have heard from the judge today, is those orders that may exist legally, but whether they are practically enforceable is an entirely different question.
So, so basically, you know, the situation is the same. Whether we invoke certain sections of the law or not, the situation is the same. It's how can we come to a peaceful resolution regardless of whatever section is invoked? Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. White?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Swayta, Member Meehan.
Thank you, Chair. I've calmed down a bit. I will ask this question. I just got some information. And it is that, could I ask David White about Part IV of the National Defense Act called Aid of the Civil Power, which states, if there is a riot or disturbance, the feds can send in the military? I guess it's not the same as the War Measures Act, but because it is, this has to do with a federal issue and the protesters are taking issue with the feds and provincial policies. Does anybody know about this Civil, the National Defense Act? Can we, can somebody look about that? Or David, Mr. White?
Chair, happy to review. Obviously, you know, the invoking federal powers is something that is going to be exclusively within the authority of the federal government.
Okay. Okay, so there seems to be, there could possibly be a tool there. Chair, I'm wondering if we can make a direction either to you as the Chair of this board to reach out to the federal government. We have several ministers who are representative of Ottawa Riddings, Minister Forte. We also have opposition members from this area that we can convene, ask the federal, for the Prime Minister to get involved in this, the premier of the province and everybody in a position of power to make this a top priority that we come up with a solution to this. We can't allow this to continue for another week in our city. Would a direction be in order?
Probably not necessary, but certainly if you would like to direct me to do that, I think I will do it anyway. What I heard today is that we should be asking everyone who has power to act now because we are in a crisis situation. And so there are other levels of government that have more power than we have that could enact pieces of legislation that could set curfews in place and that could reduce the risk to the public. And we need to ask every single level of government to push the levers that they have that will most effectively bring about the end to this. So if you want to give me a direction, you can, but I think I understand it.
I would like to give you a direction and I'm hoping that the other members of the board will support me in that. The Prime Minister has to make a statement on this. They're not going to go away until they hear from him. He can't ignore this anymore. This is in his front yard. This is his city as well as our city. And the federal government have resources that they can mobilize, legal resources that, you know, we don't, we can't access ourselves right now. We have to use every tool available in a toolbox in order to bring this to a successful and peaceful closure and get our city back into a peaceful mode. Everybody's on the breaking point. We have COVID. We're worried that this, you know, everybody who's unmasked and forcing others to unmask are going to be, this is going to be a super spreader event, whether they're outside or not. There's children down there, there's a newborn baby down there in a truck. This is unconscionable. I respectfully ask that you do everything in your power, Chair, to pull all the powers to be together in order to come up with a concrete plan to end this.
As a police board, I think that we have heard that we need more help and more resources and we need the assistance of the federal and provincial governments to do their part. What I'm not going to do is tell the Prime Minister how to do his job. And I'm sorry, but I'm not sure that meeting with terrorists is something that he's going to do. And I'm not going to tell him how to do his job. He can make those decisions. But I would ask both the federal and provincial governments to use the levers of power that they have to assist us to bring this under control. And Chief, just a last question to you before we do the second part of the agenda. And then if there's still desire to go in camera, we can go in camera. But I wondered if you could provide a final list of additional asks from the police board by noon tomorrow that you need from us?
Chair, thank you. Can I just ask you potentially to give some more discretion to the timing? This is a team that's on its 13th straight day. We're still in the middle of a demonstration. What was a half hour board meeting is now almost two hours and we're going into in camera. My operational commanders are on this call and that's a big list. We've given you a starting point. We'll try to fine tune it, but please can you just give us a little more flexibility on the deadline to come back?
As soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So received on this item, received. The second item is that the Ottawa Police Services Board approved the appointment of 250 RCMP employees as the need arises through this event pursuant to Section 53 of the Police Services Act in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the attached approval of appointment letter. See, item approved.
Two fifty-seven, Chair.
Two hundred and fifty-seven.
Yes.
Okay, so carried on that.
Carried.
Could I ask the board to give me the delegated authority to approve approvals going forward so that we don't need to convene a board meeting to do that?
I don't agree.
Carried, thank you. Okay, thank you. And then motion to move in camera?
And so move.
And Krista, do we stay on this link or is there another link? Oh, she's provided a link. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned and will move in camera. Thank you.